Cable loaded equipment, it's just, it's just not bound to have any benefits as other, as other exercises.
Are you looking to get rid of all the equipment in that room? I mean, help me understand what you're talking about, how many square, like my assumption is there's very little to know, open square foot space in there. What, what percentage of the equipment are you talking about getting rid of and how much open space would that create?
Yeah, great, great question. So we went, so we're just looking at the, at the brainstorming process of it with FIAE. They looked at a few different plate loaded machines that were not essential for the adaptive physical education with students with special needs or other equipment. So I, and I followed up with each staff member and said, where are you at, what do you think? And there was about maybe fifteen, I believe it was, and I can go back at the, at the document, plate loaded machines that were repetitive. So a lot of the cardio was staying, some of the plate loaded stuff was staying. But essentially what it did was it opened up a center lane from wall to wall that was twelve feet wide that would allow, that would allow for essentially four yards, four yards wide by, I don't know if it was like twenty-three yards long of train, potentially training turf, which would be a multi-purpose area for warm-ups, training. It would also provide a buffer down the middle of the, of the middle of the room where you could have stations for, let's say, a middle school and then other Olympic stations for high school, which would be sufficient to multiple classes in their training. They wouldn't be on top of each other, intermingling. So that was kind of the brainstorm in phase one. But it hasn't progressed to that point or certain cost components to that too. But those were some of the things kind of drafted by, drafted by FIAE on that. So it was, it was not all the cardio equipment, it was not all the plate loaded equipment. I think it was maybe about, you know, sixteen, sixteen of the plate loaded machines would have been deemed as redundant or not necessary.
If, if space weren't an issue, would we still be getting rid of that equipment we're looking at?
Yes.
Yes.
I think that would be, I think that would still be the goal. It's, it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't align philosophically with
The curriculum.
With the curriculum and the, and the vision for it. Now, are there probably some people that really enjoy certain machines? Yes, but there's a, there's a, I mean, there's a million different things you could enjoy bringing in there. So it's just data. I mean, it comes back to just being overall data and not fitting.
Do you know, is that offhand, the number of schools or the schools that originally did the same curriculum, original equipment that we got and what they're doing right now?
Um, no, that's a great question and I could certainly inquire in that. I know Marathon, I recently saw something from them. They were, sounded like they were doing something similar. They were selling some plate loaded machines and
I think a couple of them. It'd be interesting to see what they're doing, what they're leaning towards because I think they got it about the same time we did.
Yeah.
If I remember right.
And Everest too, I know Everest has got an overhaul and, and I don't, I don't know in their training facility that they don't have much for it.
I've been in Everest.
Yeah, I mean, they've got a lot of room though too.
It's a little nicer.
Yeah. Yeah, you won't see, you won't have the asbestos floor or the, the, the brick walls like we, we do there. So that's something that we've been looking at, pursuing potentially grant money for is looking at addressing our, addressing our floor down there and possibly preparing and painting the walls to some degree. But we just, we see it as a very valuable teaching space, secondary as a training space for athletes or non-athletes and then also as a, a community space. So there's a lot of traffic. I mean, I don't know how many students you may see between teams and class during a day, a couple hundred maybe.
Well, and I think going back to Diane's question is I was on the grant writing team for the last PEP grant last year and the one biggest facet that we had to meet for fitness was three dimensional, meaning different planes of movement. So if, if you had equipment in your equipment list in your grant writing process, you were, you were downgraded for having cable machines in your proposal. A lot of it was, a lot of cardio. They emphasized the rigs just based on all the different types of movements that you can do and, and the concerns with the obesity and having kids sit on machines was a huge concern. So I know when we went through the grant proposal process that, that was a big thing that we were looking at and those rigs are, are the new FIAE way. And I know that's what they were pushing with the grant writing too.
So research and data.
Yeah.
Just so you know, that, that grant was received in two thousand and three. That was fifteen years ago. That's how old that equipment is.
And that's kind of
I remember.
And I think that's, that's the big point is that we, do we want to be teaching kids things that were the, the go-to fourteen years ago? I mean, it's, that's where we're at and it's kind of that, that decision where the FIAE department's ready to, we are rewriting the curriculum and it's, it's moving forward and that's what we're working on is kids moving. And that's where, that's where we're coming up and we're trying to find how do we get kids moving.
And I do appreciate all of that because I know that United, your entire FIAE department has come forward with this recommendation.
Right. Yeah, they had that, they had that all in plan before I was even here. So it's not like I'm coming in driving it. That was just, that's, I think the big concern is when I interviewed is how, how are you going to utilize space and how are you going to get kids to move because that's how our curriculum is moving. So it's, I'm just happy that her philosophy is mashed up and I'm here, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, moving on to the business, I just wanted to provide some image, images on some of the things that take place around the year. There's a lot of excitement, there's a lot of great things for students, community to be a part of. We always have our Friday Night Football, our Athletic Hall of Fame. We have the honor of having Bob Poit come back this year, the inducted. His fifty years of his anniversary of his first undefeated team. Incredible marching band, dance team, Hall of Fame. We have the group hug, which we, we do every year with voice soccer. We've got mini-toms, our alumni recognition nights, tournament hosting, invites that we've been developing, building tradition as we've got the girl soccer and the rec center this year. They've loved this space. So that's been a great site to help have our athletes not practice at six P M. But instead be able to practice at three thirty P M., especially our middle school athletes who don't have transportation. And then also looking at getting a, getting two athletic cards for our baseball game earlier this spring. Smaller and double headers. We've got our twelve sport athlete award that we introduced last year spurred from our coaches. And that is for any athlete that has been in a sport, has been a three sport athlete for four years, which is just incredible. So it's a rare feat, but it's the, it's the backbone of, of our athletic program. It's a cross-country invite, girl soccer at playoffs. This is our dance team competing. We've got middle school soccer indoor league. We've got our softball team. And then that's a baseball team making it to state this past break. So there's some exciting things going on. And then with our facilities, obviously that gym's going to look a lot, much different in a few months. But our championship banners, skate plaques, conference pennants, video board, our senior banners, strength and fitness center. We've got, this is our multi-purpose fitness room primarily used for yoga during the school day. Very, very well received, awesome, awesome course, awesome program. Technology, we've just got some different check-in, checkout forms through Google. All those are, those are free in-house. We've got our shared folder, electronic payment, electronic registration. The pros and cons of, of the, the in-house electronic registration versus the third-party purchase. And even some of the schools that went with the third-party are, are looking for alternatives. It's just proven to be clunky and kind of counterintuitive. So we've got our athletic snap lab, that's our weekly recap of some of our athletic events. Also in our department, we've got our vision, mission, core values. We've got our growth focus, our coaches' PLC quarterly. We've got our feedback surveys, we've got our professional development on staff. Some of the things that we're working through right now is vision, strategic planning. We've got a professional development framework that we're building upon, same with our P S, PLC. We've got a Mozeny United initiative that we've been experimenting with where our high school, middle school and youth programs connect and draft, draft some sort of a kind of common vision, common theme to the program. So fostering those relationships from top down. Student leadership opportunity that we had some of our leaders attend with Focus Three at Forest Springs. That was, Focus Three is the leadership mentor or leadership liaison for the Ohio State Buckeye team, football team and Urban Meyer. So it was a really powerful opportunity for a lot of our student leaders to be a part of. Other than that, we've got some research for high school athletics and activities and what impact it has on students in the academic. Just some other considerations summarizing some of the themes of aforementioned. And then leaders need last is kind of been a resource and a theme brought back by one of our coaches. It was recommended by the Steve Jones, who's Kimberly's football coach. Kimberly is a very consistent, very successful high school football team in Wisconsin. And, and this is a resource that he uses through his program and it's something that we've been diving into in, in some, some components for, with our coaching staff and just looking at some of the components of, of leadership and, and motivation of two members. So that's been, that's been a positive as well, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Questions from the board? Where's the conference track? The conference track, we didn't know where it was at.
Hosted it? I said, I'm not sure if Lakeland was supposed to host it. Yeah, I'm trying to think off the top of my head. We just met this past week, but everybody's Lakeland put in their new turf, their new track, but then they didn't have time to lay down grass. So they might not be able to host track this year because they don't have the grass.
Corn grass right now.
Enjoy the facility.
Don't they have artificial grass up there?
They do, yeah. Yes, but because, yeah, I guess the surrounding track and field area, they, the grass did not come through, so.
Maybe next week.
I'm sure.
We don't have a lot of grass poking through either, so I don't know.
You know, based on the statistics, just find ways to encourage more students to participate in athletics. I think it does lead to good things, it's good character. You can definitely tell based on the data, they take a stronger interest in their, their school work as well, so.
I appreciate that.
There's opportunities.
I would just state to those people in the room, especially our phys ed teachers, that I recognize there's far more creative, space efficient ways. And it's more financially sustainable for us. A TRX may cost a lot less than one of these machines to buy. And if you can fill sandbags and have them with those up and they're more effective than, than using these, I would encourage you to continue to explore and expand ways to better use the very limited space that is not going to get any bigger. So thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Anything else from the board? Move on to item number eight, participants' board report.
Okay, so two weekends ago, on April seventh, we had our enchanted forest theme prom. It was a huge success, over three hundred students attended. Rastrow Pavilion to dance, we had a concession stand run by student senate for one of the first times. And we got to have a chance to take three pictures of Angela Rube. To hear a couple of Bryce Abiskin and Granny Danchick were crowned king and queen. FFA's been really busy. So an agriculture student, Hannah Ness, was selected as a top essay in the Green Bay Gambler's Dairy Day Essay Contest. She got to drop the inaugural puck on the game on April eighth. They also got four V I P tickets, a signed jersey from the team and earned a thousand dollar check for her FFA chapter. The FFA students will also be traveling to UW Madison on Friday, the twenty-seventh for their state contest. The city hanging baskets are currently growing in the greenhouse. FFA and horticulture students have spent many hours preparing the pots for the summer. The FFA banquet is on Sunday, April twenty-ninth. They encourage all board members to attend and see the great accomplishments of students from this past year. Their meal starts at eleven-thirty in the cafeteria and awards begin at twelve-thirty in the Cressky Auditorium. FFA's been extremely busy this year. Every time I send out an email, they have just a book of, of a report. So I think that'd be really interesting to see. Forensics performed today for the middle school, seventh and eighth grade English classes during seventh and eighth hour today and will again tomorrow on Wednesday during first and fifth hours. This gives the forensic students a really great chance to practice in front of a live audience. And this Friday on the twentieth, twenty-eight forensic students will be gone all day for state forensics. Good luck to them. So for vocal motion, Women's Contably Choir traveled to Chicago over spring break. The group was just over twenty young women, about half the choir, who enjoyed sightseeing, a musical and competed two classes above their original rank. They sang three unique pieces and earned a second gold. They represented Mozeny well against audition music schools from all over the country. For manufacturing, Mozeny Manufacturing went to N T C on the, on April tenth for the annual welding competition. Tony Millie, sorry, Tony Miller and Ryan Parker presented the grill fire pit that they fabricated and took home first prize. This is the fifth time that Mozeny Manufacturing has won the N T C competition. So for the library club, they recently hosted a book signing meet and greet event for Christina Wenman. If you aren't familiar, she is a seventeen-year-old senior, senior who wrote her own book. She gave a brief presentation about what it was and answered many questions on the process of publishing the book. She provides many tools, discussions and stories to help the reader explore the word success. The Chinese club traveled to China for the second time in Mozeny's history this spring break. Sixteen students from a variety of grades and backgrounds visited Shanghai, Xi'an, Beijing and more. In the duration of nine days, the group participated in a Tai Chi lesson, Chinese calligraphy class, a school visit, sightseeing and much more. The students learned a lot about China and also got possibly the once in a lifetime opportunity to be immersed in a culture halfway around the world. I know for a fact that majority of the students got their passport just for this. So this was an amazing experience for them. Wrapping up, S T C L A Meet the Easter Bunny was a large success. They saw many children come in. They also attended state at the Kalahari and achieved three golds, two silvers and a lot of great bonding time, they reported. So for the athletic report, things have been at kind of a standstill. But Mozeny Track has competed at U W S P and Ripon College for indoor meets. Softball, baseball, girl soccer and golf were all anxiously waiting to get outside and start playing some games. During requests have been an all-time high with few softball and baseball teams requesting space. And the rec center, as Mr. Ziegro said, is currently being utilized by the middle school soccer teams and has been really well received. That's all I got.
Lots of top data, so.
Yeah.
Questions from the board?
It'd be nice to see pictures from that trip.
Oh, the China trip?
Yeah.
I'm sure they have a lot, I should send some, you know.
All over Facebook and social media, if you, if you follow us.
Yeah, I like the Facebook page because if you like, if you follow the Mozeny Facebook page, there's a lot out there and Instagram as well. If you don't follow
Very good report.
Thank you very much.
Move on to item number nine, which is old business. Item A is discussion of possible decision. The second reading of the quarter, we update on policies. These are the policies that we reviewed prior to our last board meeting and then had the first reading approved at the last board meeting. So does anyone have any request for changes to any of the policies? Speak specifically to any of the policies or?
I'm still, I would still like to see a little bit more on the pre-expulsion policy. Even if we could see some other school districts that are maybe out there. I haven't talked to, to Steve that was here.
Well, Steve and Dean wrote this together, remember? So they reviewed a number of pre-expulsion policies from other schools and did all that work for us and brought forward this policy. So this is written by both Dean Dietrich and Steve LeValle, who you, from the O I, who you hire.
But is there a way?
So I would have other suggestions. They've compiled all of the suggestions.
Is there a way though possibly, did we talk at one time of like putting like circumstances or we'd see like a grid of offenses because you know, right now we have zero tolerance and we're going from that to this? Did we have something at that at one point where we saw something?
I think it's difficult to bring all those scenarios.
Well, right, but I mean, just we have kind of
Thank you.
My position on this would be, I, I like this policy. I think it's going to be beneficial to us. There's, there's review opportunity and reporting to us that's included in it. So if there comes a point in time where we're not satisfied with what these results are, we have the ability to change that policy in any time. So I, I see enough safeguards in there and information for us that to, so let's, let's see if it works for this district.
I mean, I guess maybe you need to say, let's see how it works in the first one because you don't want to see another one. You know, to see how this would come into play. You know, could we get some type of re?
I'm pretty confident in what it is, that it's going to accomplish for us, what we discussed and what we want. But my point would be if it doesn't, we'll know if it's not because the policy dictates that we're in form of, of the actions. Which, which eliminated any concern I had about
The other story.
How this would be implemented.
Okay.
Anything else in regard to that policy or the other policies? In the second meeting?
So we'd like to see the zero tolerance and discipline brought to the board with recommendations. By Dean Dietrich.
Sure, which, which policy number, Kevin?
Unfortunately, I don't have those memorized.
I know.
But it's the one that, that references discipline in the school district and states in a couple of paragraphs, zero tolerance. And as, as Dean identified, is very scripted and sometimes a constraint to making good decisions. So very open to his suggestions for that.
So you're looking for a policy that defines zero tolerance. Or zero tolerance is no longer part of the topic.
That's what his suggestion was. His logic was solid, so I'm interested to hear more.
I'll ask him to draft or to edit that, Kevin.
Yeah, so where does that?
Does that one exist?
Is that more?
No, it's I see the discussion came up with caution and then the discipline because they
To make sure they're consistent with each other.
Yes.
That makes sense. I'll make a motion to approve reading of the quarterly update of policies.
So we have a motion by Aaron, seconded by D W S. The second reading of the quarterly update of policies, further discussion from the board. Very none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine B is discussion of possible decision regarding school safety.
Sure, no, I can talk about it. The, a group of us whose names are all listed here, so I don't forget anyone. But ultimately led by Ted Hayes, or using Ted Hayes as a subject matter expert. Met at the high school, had a robust conversation about different school safety concerns. Got Ted's perspective on the need for updated and regular training of our staff on these school safety issues to include active shooter type situations. And then we went for a walk through the entire high school and the entire middle school, which really reads us like a laundry list of, we should fix this, we should change this. Somebody needs to be responsible for this, we need to lock these doors. There were solutions to many problems that are, that are free to some degree that involved training to include which desks and things are we going to put in front of doors? Assuming we don't have any funds to spend to, to address many of those issues. I thought there were a lot of creative solutions that include basically making our schools so that someone can't just show up, walk in the front door and hurt our kids. And I, I know that, I, I saw you have an attachment in here and the safety grant, but you know, that there are some expensive solutions that are going to be required to get our schools up to date. I think everyone in the room recognized that. But there wasn't anything that was addressed that we need to do that I felt was insurmountable for a district's ability to, to meet those needs.
So one of the things that you have seen on the news is that the governor has allocated money for schools. And what they didn't do yet is they, generally when they have a, have a pot of money, generally they have very specific guidelines that you follow in order to apply for those. As you said and did the PEP grant, very specific guidelines that you have to follow when you're applying for those grants. This one is, is completely open right now. And at this time, we were just supposed to identify a letter of interest and what would you cover if you had the money and what would the cost be? So it's a very generic type of letter that we met on Friday as superintendents in CISA nine and just sat down and talked about what, what does that letter look like? And many of us were concerned about getting dollars, specific dollars. When you're asking for X amount of dollars, how do you define that? So we just did, we took the laundry list from that, from that walkthrough that we did with Ted Hayes and just identified some of the things, you know, the front entrance redesign, door security buzz-in, we talked about that. Those swipe readers that would lock down, you know, maybe a different type of barricade, some crisis software. Ted talked about having some software, some ongoing staff emergency training and paying someone to come in to do that for us. Updating some of the shelter in place kits. Just some of the electronic stuff that we could have if we had a crisis software or another type of software. Hardware replacement, just a gun saves across our location. So these are just really kind of the first start of a list of what we could do differently. And many, like Matt said, are things that we can do free. As we are working on this, so we currently have two people that are, are bringing vendors in and we're going to talk about the crisis software. Bring forward to you and me, you know, what, what does it cost for us just to implement that mobile crisis software? Ted is going to be a part of taking a look at that vendor and trying to find the best vendor and then bringing forward to the board and may, what would that cost? Brent's is currently working on getting what would the locking of the doors and having those swipes available, maybe at four locations that Ted had identified. What does it take to take what Ted said, just take some of those handles off and secure some of those entrances? The door monitoring system that would, if a door was dropped open, it would ring and we would know that. Brent's getting us some prices on that. And then just securing what our training would be. Again, I want to keep this as a standing agenda item so that every single month we're bringing it forward. This is what, this is the work that we've done so far on it. One thing we did get, it's a very preliminary number, but we did look at, you know, what does it cost to secure those front entrances? And we did get some very preliminary numbers from, Steve helped us out with this, our architect, on what the high school would cost and what the middle school would cost to redesign those front entrances. So I put, I put both of these dollars into our grant. So you can see a hundred and fifty-seven thousand for the middle school and a hundred and forty-two thousand for the high school. And I really do think that there are going to be funds available for us through this grant. So we will wait and see what the, you know, million dollars that the governor put into the grant and how they're going to be allocated. Once we get those exact parameters, we'll know what we can request.
I think that one of the things that this group can do at some point is to, to bring to us a plan for what that looks like. So yeah, there's adjustments to the doors, different types of doors, different types of handles, access control at different places to really create that, paint that picture of what this looks like. And I think it's very different than what, what currently exists. But it, one of the key components that was a theme throughout this is the staff's going to have to take some adjusting because it won't be business as usual with the expectations and how people access the building. How they even function within their classroom, there's going to have to be a component of paying attention to the, the safety. Because without that staff or the staff of the school district implementing all these procedures, it's, it's a waste of time and money.
And that's one of the biggest is not just the initial training, but then all the drills that we're doing as well. So just to get a systemic annual checklist of that, pretty important. So continues
whole magazine was dedicated. You know, there's a lot of free information in there that we can do. They talked about the parking, you know, we talked at one time at the elementary school, closing off that one, so there's only one entry point for the parents to come in and drop off in that, too. You know, because that gets a little, because they say to what to watch for, what to look for. So there's a lot of information in that as well.
Thank you for that.
So as we develop the costs associated with that list, is there prioritization of everything? Obviously, we're not gonna tackle everything at once, is that kind of a next step, or two, two steps away?
I would advocate for tackling it all at once. Whether it's affordable to do that, that's a whole nother question. So I think we need to wait and see, what's the total price? Does our governor help us out? What, what's the cost to complete the rest of it? And, and if we don't have the funds available to do that, then I think that's the time to, to look at the prioritization of how, of how to allocate those dollars. Do we, do we need a motion?
No, it's just a discussion.
On the part of the other, what's the number?
Yes.
Yes. So, you know, this, this whole process doesn't work if we leave open the doors to the Cressky Center for the public. There were probably four or five different creative solutions for how to do that, whether it's to identify those people who are gonna be given access, where there's a time where they're monitored coming in, or whether it's using the doors on the southeast corner and make those the entry point for people, or whether it's for the community to install a new set of doors, cut a hole in the side of the building, and, and allow people to access that way while locking the doors inside the building to the hallway. Which is the best solution? That, we're probably really preliminary to try and pick what it is, but the, the pool won't be able to function as, as usual. We can't open the doors to the building at six o'clock in the morning and not have them supervised, and just have people come in and go through the school prior to the school day.
Anything else from the board? Move on to item number 10, new business. Item A is a discussion and possible decision acceptance of statements of the board of canvassers.
I'll say.
A motion by Kaiser, seconded by DeWes, to accept the statement of board of canvassers as presented. Further discussion from the board? Any none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10B is discussion and possible decision, approval of fee changes for the 2018-19 school year.
It's a motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Tom Chek, seconded by DeWes, to approve the schedule of fee changes for the 2018-19 school year as presented. Further discussion from the board?
I have a concern with re-